Good evening. The board has now returned from closed session and will begin regular session in Keys Union School District Board of Trustees meeting. 4.1, report out closed session items. We have nothing to report out. Moving on to 4.2, approval amendment agenda. We have updated 10.1.1 is a request to work remote. Do we have anything else?
No other items.
All right. Do we have a motion to add that one?
A motion.
We have first, do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And as normal, we'll take care of that one in order. Moving on to the flag salute by Mr. Green.
Everyone, please rise.
Ready, salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I realize we're all louder when there's students doing that. All right, moving on to invitation to address the board of trustees. Do we have any? Dana? All right. Moving on to announcements. We have a couple announcements. District-wide annual mandate training, August 8th. That's all day, correct?
Yes.
Are we going to do it in?
Yeah. If we're allowed to, to meet.
It all depends on, yeah. And then 7.2, school resumes August 10th. Seems like school got out last week and now we're already talking about restarting. Moving on to 8.1, staff reports. We have the reports. Is there any questions or concerns? All right, moving on to consent agenda items. Actions prepared for consent calendar are consistent with adopted approved policies of district and are deemed routine in nature. They will be acted upon in one motion without discussion unless members of the board request that for an item be removed from the consent calendar. In that event, it will be taken up in the order indicated on the main agenda. Any questions or concerns, 9.1 through 9.4? Do we have a motion to approve?
I have motion.
We have first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to action items, 10.1. Let's do just 10.1, the, the regular form, and then we'll do 10.1.1 as a separate item. So do we have any questions or concerns over 10.1? All right, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
I'll second.
I'm going to give that one to Mike. He was first.
And I'll second.
We have a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on to 10.1.1, that's the one added up. Mr. Brazil?
Yes, so we are, we have an individual employee who is moving out of state and ending her employment with the district in September, and we, it's for KTO, and we are asking that the board allow there to be, her to be able to work remotely between now and the end of August so that she can work on training and on leaving KTO with some support as they get ready for the new school year.
Is this supported by admin?
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect. Any questions or concerns? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll motion.
We have first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You know, Wes, you could jump in and say a vote on any of these.
Well, so here's the thing.
They're, they're moving too smoothly.
Here's the thing, when, if, if you haven't identified it yet, so when a subject comes up that I am, that I've sunk in my teeth into and I have studied and, and I'm part of that, I'm the first to say aye.
All right.
But when I'm a little bit hesitant, I, I think that it's best that somebody else said it, step up a little bit.
All right, I was just seeing, just testing you. All right, moving on to 10.2, approval resolution 21-22-12.
Aye.
Wes, you got me on that one. Ordering governing board member election, Mr. Brazil?
This is, our request is to approve the resolution that actually orders the election of three individual members for the board. There are three terms that are up. So the, our recommendation is to approve the resolution so that that may be fulfilled.
And that just goes to the county so they can run. All right, any questions or concerns?
So is that our?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Wes. Do I have a first, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to 10.3, approval Head Start Associate Teacher Job Description Revised. We do this all the time.
Most of those positions have to be revised periodically depending on what the requirements are for each individual, so we're recommending that this particular one be revised and that the board approve.
And do they have a lot of credential changes as the years go, like their, their job?
They do, absolutely.
Any questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Have a first?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to 10.4, public hearing for 2022, 23 KUSD and KTL LCFF budget overview. We're going to open that at 6:07. Anything from the public? We'll start each other for a minute.
And so just to, to share, we have sent.
An L cap?
Yes, and it has to include the, the L cap there. I was going to say we need to add the 21, 22 L cap for both KTL and for the, the regular district. We have provided the copies of the latest draft out to all staff and community members. We have had it reviewed by the county for both the accountability piece and for the fiscal pieces. And Stephanie and I have re, we feel that it's, it's, we've gotten it back. We've made the changes that were required and they are complete and ready for approval on the 23rd, which we have to uphold the public hearing first, and then both the budget and the L cap will be approved at the 23rd board meet.
All right, any questions? All right, we'll close that at 6:08. Moving on to item 10.5, public hearing for the 2022, 23 budget adoption. We're going to open that at 6:08.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. My voice is a little scratchy today.
Oh, makes you have a voice.
I do.
Don't say that.
And it's not COVID, I tested. Okay, so tonight I'm presenting the budget for the 22, 23 school year, and these are based on the assumptions we were given through the Governor's May revise and advice and guidance we're giving, given by Capitol Advisors, School Services of California, and Small School Districts Association. So in your handout, if you could turn to page two, the key guidance based on Governor's May revision proposal, on May 13th, Governor Newsom presented the May revision to the proposed state budget and included the following notable items. It increased the COLA from 5.33% to five, or I'm sorry, 6.56%, which equates to approximately $100,000 in additional funding for our district. It added $2.1 billion to boost the LCFF base rate, which is approximately 3.3%. Added one-time discretionary funded estimated at 1,500 per ADA. There were two proposals to mitigate declining enrollment, one to utilize the greater of the 21, 22 ADA or the 19, 20 attendance rate applied to the 21, 22 enrollment, and I'm going to go deeper into detail into each one of these points. Number two, it would allow school districts to utilize the greater of current year, prior year, or average of the most recent three prior years ADA. In addition, they added additional funding for the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, which is the after-school enrichment program, and added one-time funds for deferred maintenance. On page three, these are some of the slides that were provided to us from School Services. So first of all, the discretionary block grant. This proposes one-time funds and it equates to $1,500 per ADA or $100,000 as, or I'm sorry, $996,000. Did I say that right last time?
It's 99,000. Not 900.
No, you're, you're, you're right.
1,500 per ADA.
Per ADA, it is.
Okay. Expenditure of these funds is determined by the local governing board, which means you, and it can be used for any one-time purpose. So this is really fantastic for schools, and it allows us to do a lot of good things, if it happens. Deferred maintenance, so this proposal would have been amazing because it would have included the charter school who desperately needs some facilities money. They would have received a minimum of $100,000. However, this proposal has already been rejected by the legislature since this was prepared. So that one you can disregard. On page four, the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program. The governor proposed 4.8 billion. The legislature has already reduced that to 4.4 billion. However, they've taken schools who have an unduplicated pupil percentage above 75% and ours is over 90, so we would be included. They increased the per ADA amount from $2,500 to 3,000 per ADA. So if we receive that money, and the proposal would provide estimated funding of about $1.4 million. So that would be good, except that the program does come with a lot of restrictions. So we will form our program around those dollars if we get them. Also, the governor proposed to alleviate the loss of ADA in all school districts. The state of California has lost over 270,000 children. At our district, we have lost 28, I'm sorry, 68 children. From 1920 until now, we've lost 68 kids at our district. And that doesn't include the.
20? Oh, years 19. Oh. 1920.
20, 1920.
There's 20 people here in 1920. That was a long survey.
So one proposal the governor gave us was to help us with those loss of students so that we would get to average out our ADA. The other was the ADA to enrollment percentage, and what that means is that in 1920, we had 96% or our students came to school 96% of the time. Since COVID, that number has dropped down to 92%. We are hopeful that that number will come back up now that we reach our new normal. So in my budget, I've estimated that our attendance ratio is going to be about 94%. But what the governor has proposed is that we could calculate our funding based on that old 96%, which would definitely be helpful.
Is that for like one year, one budget year, or are they talking about multiple?
So one of the proposals is proposed to be ongoing. The other one was one-time only, and I'll show you the, I have a page on that. On page five, you can see this is our ADA cliff at our district. So in 2021, we had a hold harmless, so our ADA was at 736, and now we are down at 644 this last year. And that is the number that we're using. Oh, that was a typo. It says 644, it's 664.
Ralph, did you double check all these numbers?
No, it was a lot of numbers. Right below that, it shows that the attendance rate has dropped to an all-time low of 92.09%. However, we're hopeful that the ADA to enrollment will improve in the new budget year as we return to the new normal. On page five.
Stephanie, if I could just share that the actual, the 92% is still much better than some districts have experienced. So I think meanwhile, although it is low, it, we did have, you know, some great work on, on both sites, really working to make sure that those kids were here every day and to maintain that. It could have been far worse.
It is actually, 92% is the average across the state of California.
I thought it was a pretty good number for the situation.
Very, very, very good. I agree.
So the governor's proposed remedy to address declining enrollment as it applies to KUSD. On page six, the very first proposal allows schools to use the average of the prior three years ADA. So I have those numbers listed for you for 1920, 2021, 2122, and when you average those, it would make our ADA instead of 664, it would be 712. And that is approximately $628,000 of additional funding. So if that proposal comes to fruition, that's how much more money we'll receive. Proposal number two, and, and that first proposal is proposed to be permanent. So that would be an ongoing allowance that we could use the average of the prior three years. Proposal number two was supposed to be a one-time fix, and it would have generated about $746,000, but the legislature has already rejected that proposal. On page seven, the statewide average reserve levels and restricted fund balances increased tremendously, and I know, Wes, you pointed that out last time, and we talked about, you know, the COVID funding. And so it was driven by the COVID bump, and so elementary school districts, they used to be 17% for a fund balance, and the average in 2021 rose to 26%. And you'll see, you won't see, but you may recall, in 2021, our reserve was 30.9%. So we were just slightly above average. However, in this new budget year, we're projecting that fund balance to fall to 19.6%. So factors impacting statewide average reserve levels, obviously, when, before COVID came, we were looking at having to do 10% cuts. And so we were saving and cutting for that, and it didn't happen, so that helped raise our fund balance. The times that we did have to close down the schools, we have savings for vacancies of positions, unused utilities and transportation services, one-time restricted funding used for current expenditures. So we didn't do that so much at our district. I am committed to just using one-time funds for one-time purposes, not ongoing costs. But we did have, and we have the expectation that this coming year, the school is going to return sort of back to normal. So we're budgeting for those kind of expenditures. On page eight, new this year, we have to carry over any unspent concentration grant funding. So anything that we didn't spend in 21, 22 has to be carried over for the same purpose in 23, 24, and that's going to be ongoing. And essentially, this money, it's the additional 15% of concentration funding that we receive, and it is restricted. We can only hire new staff with these funds. And it has to be staff either certificated or classified who provide direct services to pupils. So you can see that we, we budgeted to add in this year that we just finished. We added two office assistants, four paras, one health aide. We added 2.25 additional days per week for, with our nursing contract with the county office, and we added a 75% FTE music teacher. So it took us a while. We had budgeted that that would cost $348,000, but because we had such a hard time hiring and filling those positions, we actually are only going to spend $168,000 by June 30th. So that means that we are going to have to carry over $177,000 and use it for those same purposes.
But isn't that good? We're not losing it. We're, we're able to benefit if we do.
So carryover is not always a bad thing, but what it does is it challenges you to use your, that money and your new pot of an additional 15,000 or 15%.
Gotcha.
So it essentially then becomes one-time money. It's not ongoing. That carryover is just one time.
What's the challenge of spending it?
You would think, right? So the, the challenge is that we can only add staff, but that 177 carryover now is only one time.
Right, so you're going to have to hire staff that are going to be designated as temporary. So it's very hard to tell someone, we would love to have you, but you're only here for as long as we have the funds. And in essence, that's what we do with anybody, but this particular pot of money, that there really is, when it's run out, you, you either have to use your general fund to cover that position or those services, or, or you, you can't do it. So that's really the challenge, finding someone who's willing to take it, knowing that it may be a foot in the door, and maybe.
That'd be considered just a Band-Aid though.
But I.
It's a huge Band-Aid. I absolutely agree. It's a huge Band-Aid. It really does, because it, it, it provides services that we know, and as administrators, it's so frustrating to know we're doing this and we're setting up this program, fully staffed with these kids, and I know I can only do it this year. In the following year, we go back to having nobody. So it's, it's, it's not a realistic expectation of districts to, to really do what I, I, I think it would be wonderful if, when we're giving one-time money, that it was said, you may use it how you best see fit in your own district. Because each district is different, each community has different priorities, but unfortunately, this one-time money comes with these things of you will hire all new employees. Well, maybe that's not really what we need. Maybe we had enough employees. Maybe what we needed was new roof or, or something different. That's the challenge, is that we can't do that.
And I think the difficulty was, look how long we tried to hire a band and art teacher. We got a band teacher eventually, but we still don't have an art teacher, and I think that's a huge difficulty now that we still have the same task for next year with that extra money, and we're hoping, we don't even know if that's even possible.
Well, so what I budgeted, because we have carryover, and I said it can be a good thing. So we can use it and utilize it as a tool to help cover step and column increases for those specific positions. So for example, if you look at the first line where it says added two office assistants, four paras, and one health aide, and the budget was $200,000, when you look right below for 22, 23, that same line item, it's those same staff, but now those salary costs are $206,000. So it went up $6,000 in just one year for step and column increases. So that carryover will help cushion those increasing costs. So for 22, 23, we are able to cover the increase in costs. We also increased the music teacher from 75% to a full FTE, and we can cover all of those costs, and we're only digging into that carryover by $46,000. So that's okay. We'll have carryover again at the end of the coming year, which will help pay for step and column for these same positions in that out year. So I think having 177,000 carryovers is not necessarily a bad thing. I don't think we have to hire people to use up that money. I think we can use it up over time, paying for step and column.
And the music teacher is okay going full-time?
Yes, that was the intent when he was hired.
That was my question, but I wasn't going to ask it.
There was, he had some other obligation. He couldn't, he couldn't start.
Worked at a church.
Okay.
As I said, I knew he had something going on.
No, it actually worked, worked out really well for us because we were able to get the .75 versus having, yeah.
So on page nine, this was a little bit of a surprise for me. I feel like I try to keep up on these things, but the economy has just been nuts, as you all know, and inflation, of course, has run rampant. And a side effect of that is that where we were told $15 an hour was going to be the cap for minimum wage, because of inflation, it's no longer the cap. So there's laws that had, that are, have been triggered so that the minimum wage is going to continue to go up. It's going to go to 1,550 starting January 1, and it will continue to increase. Right now, they're projecting $17.50 an hour will be minimum wage, January of 2028. So it's going to continue to go up between 40 and 50 cents per year unless something changes in the economy. Of course, if we have a huge recession, that could all change.
We have to change our salary schedules every time that happens, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Minimum wage should never be $17.
He said that about 15.
I was not for that either. Started at 375.
3, 305.
And all this is based on the community, or the, the CPI, or CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index, and all of these formulas are part of legislation that they implement, and, you know, no one really looks at, well, what if? What if that happened? Everybody thought it was the 15. Well, no. And the sad thing is that inflation has grown at a rate that we haven't seen in over 30 years or, or, or longer. I mean, we're talking about 79, I believe, that we saw the, the rates of inflation as we're seeing today. So I don't think that the economy is, is, is stable, and I think we're going to hit more and more of these targets that no one ever thought we would. Stephanie, you're just happy to be going.
I'm moving to Oregon. Page 10, and the statutory COLA went from 5.33% to 6.56%. We, I've built that into the budget. And current law is still the same, where funding is based on the greater of current year or prior year ADA. So we've not taken into consideration any of the governor's proposals. We're waiting to see what actually gets flushes out, what flushes out in the final budget. Page 11, I'd just like to point out that in 2021, we were down nine students. 21, 22, we lost 38 students. And in 22, 23, I'm showing that we're going to be down another 21 students. So that's why I'm saying we will have lost 68 students basically due to COVID.
And just moving out of state, right?
That's what they tell us.
Moving in with other families in our communities, there's millions.
But they're not really moving within California. They've actually been lost. They're gone, out of California.
Gotcha. California actually has what we call the CalPads program, which tracks students. They're given a, a number when they enter, and it tracks them throughout the, their careers and, or their educational career. And so many of those, at the end of each year, you have to go in and, and submit the report to the state that says how many students dropped, how many went to another district, and so these are ones. For example, if we lose 30 kids from here and they're going to enroll in Modesto, once they get to Modesto, Modesto City Schools has to then change the CalPads and, and pick those kids up, and those are theirs. Well, when they leave and they don't enroll, or they enroll out of state, there's no way for us to report out-of-state kids, or if they're not enrolled in a school. So that's where we kind of look at, well, we don't really know where they went. You know, some may have gone, you know, out of the country. We don't know. Some may have left the state because it's, CalPads is only a state-run software program. It's not across the, the US.
I didn't know that. Learned something new.
Oh, it's amazing what I know.
I thought Stephanie taught you that.
No. And on page 13, finally, this is what our budget for 22, 23 looks like. We have projected revenue of, in the blue column, of 13.4 million and expenditures of 15.6 million. So we, we're spending in excess of revenue 2.2 million. Normally, that would never happen, but we are spending those final COVID funds. And if you look under capital outlay, under expenditures, we are projected to spend $1.8 million on those facility projects that we've taken to the architect for both SMS and KES. So we still don't know how much those projects are going to cost us, but this is the amount of money we have to spend towards those projects. So we'll do as much as we can. So that being said, we will have a beginning fund balance of 6.5 million and an ending fund balance of 4.3 million, which is still a very healthy fund balance for our district. If you turn to page 14, this is just a review of the increase in STIRS and PERS, and this is the first time that they've talked about those rates actually coming to a peak. So in the 22, 23 school year, STIRS and PERS are expected to peak at their highest rate and then actually come down. But of course, it's all based on the economy, and we know that's not going well.
They also didn't realize that we would have the largest number of people retiring all at the same time because their actuarial studies actually showed that people would obviously work more years, and many people chose to say, no, I've had enough, thank you, and so.
And not enough, enough of us have died.
No.
Way to take it to the extreme.
She says it as she's retiring.
If you turn to page 15, these are LCFF calculations. So in 22, 23, again, I've only included the increased COLA. There will be more money to come. We just don't know exactly how much or how it's going to be sent to us. The change in funding over prior year is actually $403,000 less because of our continued declining enrollment, projected declining enrollment. We also have an increase in PERS and STIRS, and of course, the 15% increase we receive in concentration funding is restricted to hiring new staff. And recall that applying alternative calculations from the governor's proposed ADA enrollment relief could increase funding from 628,000 to 746,000. We know the 746 is not going to happen now. On page 16, this reviews our fund balance is projected to be 4.3 million. We still have our assignment, our reserve for economic uncertainties at 9.5%. All of our regular assignments with an ending fund balance, or, I'm sorry, not an ending fund balance, but an unrestricted balance of 1.5 million. So that makes our total reserve 19.6%. So that's still a very healthy reserve, and the reason it went from 30% down to 19 is because we are spending those COVID funds on construction. The remaining COVID funds. On page 17, the declining, so this is showing the declining fund balance. So we had a high of 6.5 million. We're spending that down to 4.3. But you'll notice that those blue bars keep going down in the out years. So this declining fund balance reflects only the COLA, does not incorporate any of the ADA proposals from the governor, and the decline is also based on the assumption that enrollment does not recover in the out years, that those kids are gone and they're not coming back. And hopefully, what you see here is the worst-case scenario. On page 19, I just want to bring your attention to the total available reserves. So we're showing 19, we're projecting 19.6% in the coming year. It goes up to 27.14% due to the increase in COLA, and then 22.43% in the second out year. And finally, we come to the charter school. And finally, we come to the charter school. The charter school had um, an amazing turnaround in their enrollment. From when I gave you the second interim report, we were showing that they were potentially going to have to make cuts. Their enrollment came in much higher than what they had reported in October. So their numbers are looking really good. Um, the P-two attendance report that we filed in April, they had thirteen more students uh, than projected. And they, and, and their revenue, of course, includes the COLA increase. They do receive that as well. So their uh, revenue versus expenditures, they actually have an excess of revenue of eighty-three-thousand dollars. So they're not spending their full funding. However, once they make their loan payment of a hundred-and-eleven-thousand dollars, they'll have a decrease in fund balance of only twenty-eight-thousand dollars, which is really fantastic. They're going to end up with an ending fund balance of two-point-two million. And they have their normal reserves. And once they fulfill their normal reserves, they basically, it says under other reserve, which is excess of seven-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand dollars. Um, when I reported to you at second interim, there, we were still holding aside that four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars for the CDE overpayment. So that's been completely repaid. So there's no more obligation there.
Uh, how many more years they have on their loan?
Like thirty? I, I presented it to the board, I think at second interim.
Yeah.
Um, the details of the loan payment. So if you turn to page twenty-three, um, if you recall, at second interim, I gave you two scenarios for KTL. Uh, one was really bad with the blue bars going way down. And the other one was showing if enrollment maintained. And so this graph looks very similar to the graph I proposed to you at second interim because they were able to increase their enrollment. So an increase, even a small increase in enrollment can really do amazing things to, uh, to, for your funding. It's very important. And then finally, on page twenty-four, we had projected three-hundred-and-twenty-three at second interim and they came in thirteen students more. So I am showing that um, to be conservative, they're going to be down twelve students in twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, and so this budget is very healthy considering those assumptions, in my opinion. That's the end of my report. Any questions?
If Jimmy makes his way in the office anytime soon, could you explain it to him?
Well, I would like.
He's already been.
He better be watching. That was a joke.
I would like to add, this was really an unprecedented year for what the governor composed and what is actually going to be passed. Typically at the May revision, we know that's what it's going to be. We throw it into our budget. But this year it was so uncertain that all of the consultants that we deal with said, don't put it in your budget. We don't know what's going to happen. And so um, once the state's budget is finalized, it should be by June thirtieth, then while we'll be putting all of those actuals into the first interim report. So in September, we will know what our funding is going to be solidly.
Gotcha. Now, what, what the, used to be that the legislature had June fifteenth as this uh, deadlock day or, or the day that they had to approve the budget or they would not get paid. Uh, however, they have passed uh, other measures. They had, they, they've passed those so that they now are allowed to continue to get paid because they've agreed in essence to a total amount of the budget. They just haven't agreed to where those items are in the budget. So the, the, the governor now has fourteen days to take and negotiate with the legislature. And in fourteen days, which now we're down to thirteen, because today was the sixteenth, he has to produce a, a, or a budget or sign the budget, but he has the authority to do some line nine, line item um, veto. So. With that all being said, I want to share something because this will be the last time that Stephanie uh, presents her financial reports to, in this building. And we are absolutely uh, going to miss her very much. It still doesn't, hasn't quite sunk. So we wish you absolutely the best. You know that.
Thank you.
And I have something for you, but I can't give it to you here.
Thank you. I've enjoyed my six years at Keys. It's been a lot of fun.
Remember when you told me you ten? I was thinking.
I know, I totally.
You remember when you told me ten?
I do remember that.
Did she, Jeff?
Yes, she did.
So that's how she got that.
But honestly, I thought four was gonna be, I thought she was gonna retire at four. All right, um, so, so we're gonna close that at six-thirty-seven. Probably went along as budgets talks you've had in a while. Was trying to. All right, moving on to item ten-point-six, public hearing for HSS instructional material adoption. We'll open that at six-thirty-seven. Mr. Brazil?
This is, uh, we, anytime we adopt uh, any instructional materials, they have to be uh, shared with, with the community, with the uh, public and there has to be an opportunity for the public to review those materials and to make um, comments or, or ask for, for clarification, any of those things. So what we're asking is that we move forward with uh, purchasing of our um, history and social studies curriculum. Um, and that'll be the next step will be to approve that.
Any questions or concerns? All right, we'll close that at six-thirty-eight. Moving on, item ten-point-seven, approval of twenty-two, twenty-three special education local plan area SLPAC certificate five, Mr. Brazil?
So this is, um, we asked that the board approve the local plan, which is our special education uh, plan for, which is administered through the Stanislaus County uh, special education uh, entity. And so we're asking that you um, go ahead and, and approve the twenty-two, twenty-three uh, plan.
Any questions or concerns? We have motion to approve?
I'll motion.
We have first?
I'll second.
Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten-point-eight, approval of D-LAC recommendations, Mr. Brazil?
Yes, so um, we're asking that the board approve D-LAC, which is the district um, EL uh, committee. Um, and what we're asking is that the board um, approve the recommendations that are being made to the board. Um, we have someone who has joined us as the EL coordinator. And so she has worked to, to get this before the board so that we can start the year um, in, in compliance. So.
Any questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
I'll motion.
But first, I have a second?
Ross, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten-point-nine, approval of CSEA Keys Chapter five-four-four Sunshine, twenty-two, twenty-three reopeners initial proposal. Mr. Brazil?
And this is, we've received from CSEA their sunshine proposal and we're asking that the board accept that sunshine proposal uh, as presented from CSEA.
Any questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
I'll motion.
I have a first, I have a second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moving on to ten-point-ten, approval of KUSD twenty-two, twenty-three sunshine proposal to KSC, C, CSEA Keys Chapter five-four-four?
So this is our uh, sunshining proposal um, for uh, beginning to bargain with the CSEA uh, chapter.
Any questions or concerns? It's all standard issue?
Yep.
Do we have motion to approve?
I'll motion.
But first, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to ten-point-eleven, approval of twenty-two to twenty-two-seven, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, California State University Stanislaus Counselor Education Field Experience. We've done this before. That's how we've gotten our counselors.
Correct. We, we allow um, students who are finishing up their counseling degrees at, at Stanislaus State to be placed uh, under supervision, but in our school sites to uh, attain their field hours and field work that they need to do.
Who supervises them?
They're, someone from the uh, from the uh, university. And the university has also at times reached out to our own counselors. And so our own counselors oversee if it's the type of program that they have expertise.
A little on-the-job training, huh?
I think we got both.
But it's, it's been very helpful to us because we, we, for example, this year, the need for uh, mental health services and support for students was so great that those individuals really worked hard and, and were absolutely used every day.
So what a blessing then, huh?
It is a blessing. And indeed, we have, I believe, both of our counselors right now came as a result of that program. So.
It's always a five-year agreement.
It, it typically is, yes.
So we get interns that we get to see how they work. And then I, I believe we hired both of them from seeing how they worked first before we.
Yes.
Yeah. All right. Any questions or concerns? Do we have motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item ten-point-twelve, agreement of twenty-two, twenty-three school attendance review board SARB contract.
So we're asking that the board approve the contract. This is what we hope will be one of those things that will increase our ninety-two percent to perhaps a ninety-six or ninety-seven percent, which we were more accustomed to seeing. Um, it is a, a contract where the Stanislaus um, Sheriff's Office, the Stanislaus County Office of Education and districts uh, come together with community resources and hold hearings to attempt to um, curb students being absent and kind of addressing the needs of the family and of the students. What are the conditions? What's going on? And then a lot of times they are put under contracts and uh, and we have seen tremendous improvement fro, from them. Mrs. um, R, Rugar has gone to most of the, I think most of the cases this year came from SMS. Uh, and she spent quite a bit of time at the, the hearing. So um, again, I think it, it's something that we absolutely need to have the support of because there's, as I said, there's the sheriffs, there's other uh, other entities that can kind of share and, and share with the parents how important it is that a child is here every day. And to kind of help them, if there are consequence or there are situations rather, that they are not being able to attend, how can we possibly get some community support and, and change that so that students can be at school every day?
Years ago, I, I sat on several, several, several panels and it was amazing to see how they, you get the, you get the report, you see everything and then they, they decide if it's the mom, that's the factor, then everybody pushes like, how can we help the mom? Or how can we be strong on the mom? Or how can we be sympathetic to the mom if it's a student? Uh, I also sat with City Modesto and that was way different experience. I really uh, appreciated the way the, the county sheriffs ran it. And it was, if the kid, if the family needed love, they got love. If they needed discipline, they got a contract with discipline. So I thought it was a great program. Uh, and it's very beneficial.
You know, I, I, I think that our, there are many SARB boards and I think ours is particularly effective. I think because of the fact of the composition of having the support of those community agencies. Because if not, if there's no one to, and the district attorney honestly wanting to take on those cases that are tough and, and to, and to look at, what is the real reason why these kids aren't here? And sometimes they have to go uh, and seek because the parents' responsibilities aren't there. So we, I, I remember when these um, hearings were actually held in the jail, which was a little um, little daunting for anybody going because you were, you were taken into the Stanislaus County Jail. And that's where the hearings.
We had SARB for years and we had it when we were in school.
Yeah.
You guys got scared by Fred Beigler.
I got, well.
Yeah.
I was close.
Yeah. All right, um, any questions or concerns? Uh, motion to approve?
I'll motion.
I'll give that one to Jeff. I got a first, I got a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to ten-point-thirteen, approval of twenty-one, twenty-two Central Region School Insurance Group Work Compensation Annual Certificate. Chrisig?
So this is Chrisig. Yep, it's our um, workers' comp carrier. And it's the certificate, what you were approving is the certificate for twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, and our recommendation is that the board do so.
Any questions or concerns? Motion to approve?
I'll motion.
We have a first or we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Discussion item eleven-point-one, SMS track facility improvement updates?
So the updates there, Stephanie and I and um, Eric have been meeting with the architects. And our last meeting, we basically got the indication that we probably would not be able to move forward with anything until late August. Um, that that might be the time that we will actually be able to go out and get um, and have all the paperwork that's required to be ready to go out to bid and to kind of see, as Stephanie referred to, how much or how many of the products we can actually afford depending on what the bids come in at. So.
I would think all the contractors are booked all summer for school facilities.
Absolutely. It's tough to find, absolutely.
Since Jimmy's not here, should we vote against the track? All right. He's probably watching us over. All right, moving on to reports, uh, superintendent report, Mr. Brazil?
Okay, I'll be short. Um, I want to thank, uh, thank Ms. Rosales uh, for her work as she has taken on the EL coordinator role for next year. She's kind of hit the, the ground running and she's been very busy planning and working on a district EL master plan that we'll have before the board sometime in August or in the fall. She's also implemented a testing schedule that will allow kindergarten students um, who are joining us next year to actually be assessed prior to school starting so that the first day they, they are in. And, and again, we're, we're trying to do as many as we possibly can prior to school starting so that the services can begin that first day and that we kind of have an idea of where students are when they enter. So that to me is a, is a, a great, she, she felt this would be, and I believe it is, one of the better changes that I think we can do to support kids there. The LCAP plan, you've, you've heard the final draft uh, for both ours and, and KTL. Um, both uh, district plans have been approved for fiscal and accountability at the Department of uh, our County Office of Education. However, once you approve it, they still go through with it for, I, I, again, and then they issue a letter stating that they've either accepted or denied it. But um, we have provisional approval. Uh, we continue to work on all the building of facilities projects. Um, we, as I said, we've met with legal counsel and with the architect. Uh, and again, in August, we hope to be looking at those things and, and to moving forward. Um, we're hoping that costs, they are skyrocketing. So we're hoping that some of those things we'll be able to do. Um, and we, I, I wanted to also uh, share that the current projects that we're doing, for example, at SMS, the roofing project is now in the curing stage. So it's about thirty days to where they'll come back and then do final touch-ups on, on the roof. But the roof looks absolutely amazing. And as you can see, as you came in today, if you hadn't seen before, there is the project going on here at KES with all of the overhangs and, and some of these older buildings that really it, it's a mess up there of all of the wiring, of, of plumbing, of things that have been uh, kind of fixed.
Added but not taken down.
Exactly. And so um, we haven't, we have um, encountered some dry rot. So we had increased the, or not increased, but we have kind of over-budgeted by about ten percent so that we, if we had those change orders come in, that we would be able to cover it. So I think we're, we're doing well. Uh, and they're doing great work. They are very courteous a group. Um, they've been here. They are polite with the kids. They're, um, it really is a, 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 a great project. So we're, we're thankful that that's going well. Um, summer school is going well also. We're averaging about eighty-four or eighty-six percent attendance. Um, summer school tends to be that. We, we start out with, you know, these large numbers. And then as the summer school goes along, they tend to drop out um, and, and/or come less frequently. Uh, I also want to thank um, not only uh, Mr. Murray for, for taking on summer school, but also um, the ACIS staff, all of them, and we have one here tonight for their amazing work uh, and supporting students that basically we're using our funding from the state to provide uh, academic support and enrichment support for students. Uh, and they actually stay through four o'clock. So summer school finishes at twelve-thirty and they remain here at four o'clock and engage in activities. Um, we provide them lunch. We, they get snacked in the afternoon. So I want to thank them. ACIS was willing to do this and is supporting. And this is kind of a model of what we hope because we still have some of that carryover money that we need to do next year as the legislature moves us to having students in a nine-hour program of, or educational program for the day. So that will be a long day for a lot of kids, but that's the movement. So we're, we're kind of trying it out. And I think it's been very successful in terms of, but then I'm not there till four o'clock. So I can't say. They're always great. But um, I also want to share that I enjoyed coming out with district staff and judging the fireworks safety, uh, door decorating project in summer school. The kids did an amazing job. They were all really, really good. Um, maintenance and operations, I want to say that they are busy working uh, hard to clean rooms and to accomplish summer projects. Um, I thank each of them for their dedication and work quality. You know, they're, they're all of a sudden being faced with this very short window that we had prior to COVID and during COVID, of course, because schools were closed, we had so much more time to get rooms and things ready. Now it's back to that time crunch of scheduling it. So I appreciate all they do and, and Eric um, uh, really supporting his crew as well. We will be holding negotiation sessions with KTA next week. Uh, and now that CSEA has also sunshine their proposal, uh, we'll be reaching out to schedule negotiation sessions for, with, with CSEA. And for now, I wish everybody a great summer and some time off for those who, who get it. And our next board meeting, I just want to make notice that it will be next Thursday, the twenty-third, but it will be at seven AM at the district office. And that will be for budget approval and LCAP.
What, um, so I had a, was Mr. Murray, was it mandatory for him to do summer school or, or in his own accord?
No, he, 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 it's, he applied. We, he applied. We, we opened it up. And so if there are other staff. And so if there are other staff members, for example, that have an administrative credential, then we we would have looked at that. But I think in this district and in most districts, the protocol is that we first offer it to those administrators that are currently.
Is the line long or?
No. I don't think anybody has beaten that down.
I think I.
It's summer school. They don't want to come in summer.
Maybe Mr. Murray can share. Maybe his arm was twisted a little. I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. I I, and I know that, yeah.
I think that was a setup. I think he knew the answer.
Maybe, maybe I didn't.
All right, is that it?
That is it.
All right, moving on to board member comments, Mr. Green?
Uh, well, you know, I have one today and it's a special one, right? So so I was driving here from from working today and it was one of them hot days outside. We listened to a little music while we were stuck going and the song came on. It was a song by Brad Paisley. I don't know if you've heard it, but one of the, one of the phrases he sings in it is, I'm gonna miss you. You know, and Stephanie, I'm gonna miss you, you know? So I I thought about that and when I got here today and then when I realized, oh my gosh, this is your last time here. That song just was so relevant to me today, so I couldn't figure out why. It was playing. I just loved it and but I truly will. I will, I will personally and truly miss you, my friend. Thank you.
You can visit her at the office for a couple more days?
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
Or we can go to Oregon. All right, anything else?
Uh, that was it.
All right, Mr. Bruno?
Just one thing, Stephanie, enjoy your, well, vacation now, your permanent vacation, your retirement.
All right, Mr. Green?
No comment.
All right, I got several. We all, all board members got this cute little note with a picture from Ms. McGinnis's class. Handwritten, it was really cute, just thanking the board members for what they see we do around campus and what they think we do. It was best thing opened in the binder because sometimes some of the stuff is boring or it's bad news and it was really great to see that right in their little front lip. Graduations were great, banquets were great, the banquet was beautiful. When it went indoors, I was really against it, but it it just comes out and shines. We're thankful we were able to do the bus this year. The families came out to support it. I spent my last day at Spratling Middle School and I went around and won as many prizes as I could off those teachers. Because if the kids were playing a game, so was I. I really enjoyed myself, ate lunch with them and then waited till they all left and saw them leave. Made fun of a childhood friend's daughter because they, she was the last one picked up, so I kept calling the mom and say, hey, your kid's here. But that was great. Stephanie, I have nothing to say because it's not ten years. You know how I feel about you. I've always been honest with you, but I wanted four more years. You made a promise, so do we get a payment back or anything?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
And again, the board meeting is a week from today, seven o'clock. I'm showing up in work clothes because I'm going to work right afterwards, so you guys show up as you see pajamas, whatever you need to. Usually a really. Usually a really quick meeting and then, but that's at the district office.
Yes.
Uh, do I have motion to adjourn?
I motion.
But first, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
And Raul?